We'll go ahead and start our workshop. Thank you for being here, October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Winterville City Council. And first, you know, I think I will, Chairman Watwood, since you had a long night last night, I didn't, I didn't have this on the workshop agenda, but we always have some council issues or concern at the very end. I may just get a kind of a brief update of what was decided last night.
Yeah, so he was out spending a good amount of time just talking over different issues and questions. Yeah, and at the end of it all, we just tabled, uh, our decision was to table the project. Uh, and actually, he asked for sixty days. We gave him the option. Typically, it says in there that you gotta make a decision within forty days in the hearing. But there's a lot of things he had to do, like the traffic impact study, sewer capacity study, and those kind of things which take time.
Right.
But he asked for sixty days. He doesn't seem to be as huge a hurry. So he wanted that time to put all this stuff together. And what we also told him to do is send him on this to the items discussed that were kind of, uh, changes he might consider.
Yeah.
Whatever he comes back with in December, that's what we'll let him have.
Okay.
That's one of the things to mention that I found probably the most interesting thing is, uh, my mind, I always kind of envisioned this as being walkable shopping, that kind of thing, and the first four commercial pieces. Well, Bruce hit on this at the very start, that he wants to take the entire thing and change his zoning to PLC dash PD. PLC is professional limited commercial. So basically, if you're talking about doctors' offices, dental offices, lawyer offices, financial institutions.
Right.
Just kind of maybe a flower shop or a music shop, but nothing like typical retail. So, uh, then again, I'd have to ask David or somebody else, what's really allowed when you take up zoning and then put PD in handup? Because in the PD description, it says it's residential, and it's residential dash BD, then you can put service businesses or retail businesses in a residential area as a PD. So I don't know why you couldn't do that for a professional, professional, anyway. That's what he wanted, uh, the designation to be. So I just wanted you to know that because, uh, his intention that he told us is, I thought it would be like rental space at the bottom.
Right.
And then rental apartments at the top. Everything in the development is to be sold.
Right.
He's gonna, all of the townhouses, all the what you call mansion flats, which is really nice apartments, they're all gonna be sold. So, um, he's, he's, he pictured, he said his vision would be like a commercial residential area that he would sell it to like a dentist.
Yeah.
On the bottom floor, and they would buy the bottom floor as well. So there wouldn't be any issues between who's on top, who's on top. Kind of solves that problem, too.
Right.
You know, but, uh, I guess what I'm telling you is, is if you thought that you were gonna be walking around shopping on the bottom areas, that's not what Winterville probably gonna see, unless he changes his mind. Right now, what his thoughts are is he's gonna have professional people.
Well, professionals.
Upstairs and downstairs.
Right. Yeah, and that's kind of what he's been saying the entire time.
Okay. For some reason, I had in mind that it might be a pizza shop or a ice cream.
But they, but they'll do that too, though. So he might not have stated that, but they'll, uh, you know, um, barburritos would buy the bottom floor and then buy the top floor as well. So that, that, that's a possibility. And I, I know that that was talked about at one meeting somewhere, or somebody else, or maybe a realtor said that, yeah, that the restaurants do that too. They'll buy the bottom floor and buy the top floor for storage or office or whatever.
Rented out, they can rent out.
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, I'm trying, does anybody have any questions for Chairman Watwood?
I do, because in that scenario, my understanding with the planned development ordinance, the overlay we did, it incorporates the, the ordinances or the, the regulations of the underlying district. So let's say that happens, that he gets it to professional limited commercial, and therefore, it, it starts off with that. Uh, just because it's a planned development, I don't, that, that doesn't automatically grant them the right to do whatever they want there. If, if they wanted to change from professional limited commercial at some point and go, hey, I don't wanna do a dentist's office, I wanna do, a bad example, a Chili's or whatever, a restaurant, right? They would then have to come back and get that particular part rezoned straight commercial, right? Or, or have us to, to do a variance on the PD. Like, just, just the fact that it's in a PD, I don't think grants them the right to just do whatever they want there. Is that correct?
If they have to change, if they wanna change the use.
Yeah, we would still have to gi- give them a variance on that. Okay, okay.
That's for a redesign.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. So I think the cost of residential piece, that all that subdivision itself, we could put any kind of retail or service shop he wants to have.
Well, not what I, not unless we re, not unless we give them variance.
That's what I'm saying. PD, the PD description ordinance itself states something in the line towards the bottom, that says if it's a residential, and that's the underlying district, he's allowed to put in a service or retail business.
All right, then, on the residential or on the, and, and, no, so it doesn't address the professional limited? I need to review that, okay?
Yeah.
I, I wanna review that, okay.
Did you talk to David about that, Allison?
Okay. So you can do that, or the, or that you guys, if you have permission to do that, you can do something.
No, if you, if this is all PD, then you can do that.
Okay, I need to check that out.
Yeah, so I was under impression that that was an option, that the PD gave us an option to do that, but it wasn't automatic. We still had the control, as my understanding.
Yeah, 'cause I thought, like Bruce said, and maybe we're just talking around each other, but, um, and we'll get David to clear it up for us, but I thought it was the overlay on top of whatever the district was, the PD would overlay on that, and the code, the ordinances for that zoning would apply to the PD.
Yeah, makes the most sense. I just read that thing a while ago.
Yeah, I mean, we, we need to clarify that. But great job last night. It was a whole lot of people.
Yeah, it was a good round.
Yeah, that was great. Thank you for, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice luck.
But, and I think, so one other thing is, there's a moratorium right now on lift stations throughout the county, right?
That's what I heard.
So, and that's what I was, I was a little puzzled that he brought this forward so soon, because it seems like that's gonna be a while, like months.
Pretty long.
I have a feeling that he's gonna ask for an extension past December from us, and may even continue to do so. So I don't, well, I mean, I know we, and I'm gonna have the town hall October twenty-fourth at seven, so talk about it here for the citizens, if they can get to come in.
Yeah.
Um, and kind of update him on that. So I might ask you to join me if you can, or I might get some people for that, to see if there's any new change.
He, he, he did say at, at the end, because he was, uh, our engineer was, he was referencing, actually, he was talking about sewage at the time, but I think the same thing applies to this, in that, yes, it's not quite there yet, like there was an issue with the sewage line that may, they may be able to tap in, but that they wanted to go ahead and get the rezoning done with the anticipation that these other things will be in place by the time they get ready to build. I don't think he was gonna hold off on the rezoning until he had that assured. He was making assumptions that it would be available.
Yeah, but I, I just don't think that's gonna be, I'm saying, so, um, okay, thank you, Chairman Watwood. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Anything, any discussion about that? Okay. No, moving through this, uh, we've got a lot to cover, but, um, just a lot of, like, the updates. Twenty twenty-one audit budget amendment. So we have a, uh, a new CPA who stepped in to help Woody out. Woody has COVID again. But, um, I've been, I was on the phone with Keith, um, the CPA who specializes in small government audits, and he is doing his best to get it done to us by next Tuesday.
Wow.
So that we can possibly vote on it, if we look, if we have time to look through it, vote on the draft. So he's gonna get a draft to us next Tuesday, and if not, November, but sooner the better, because we need to, um, get back into the twenty twenty-one budget. Any questions there? And moving forward, he will be, I think Wendy, he's gonna be handling our, our audits from now on. He, he was, he was jamming up.
He'll be here in the morning.
What's that?
He's gonna come first, like, in the morning.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a good, long conversation, so he's, he's knows what to do with Wendy and get this done, so hopefully can get it done for us by Tuesday. Um, twenty twenty-two budget update retreat, um, we are all set for ten o'clock Sunday. Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, in here, probably work through, we have lunch brought in, work through about one o'clock, um, just to deal specifically with the budget and the Marigold Collective proposal. Um, the, the rescheduled weekend retreat will deal with the visioning for twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Good. If for some reason, I'll probably know in the next twenty-four hours what our next five to seven days is gonna look like, and I'll let y'all know as soon as possible. But if we have to reschedule this to, uh, ask in advance, fine. Um, so, um, but I'll let you know as soon as possible. Moving on, Marigold Collective proposal, um, just to discuss that in tandem with the jet item number two, we'll discuss that at the retreat. I'd like to go ahead and get that money earmarked. It is important. Uh, we just gotta get the money right. Do you have anything you need to talk to us about?
I'll just hear your question.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Sharon? Um, great job again this year. I can't believe it's kind of winding down, but, uh, we do need to get that money earmarked out of ARCA, because a lot of hands are reaching in for that funding, so, and that's a transformative project that lasts long, a long time for the city, benefits the city and the community for a long time. Comprehensive plan update. I, um, Tina, can you update us on anything with the comprehensive plan?
Just going through the slides with Tony right now. Um, so he has it all under control. We haven't started actually any hands-on doing. We've just been talking about what the plan is, what we might think about including, and as one of the ladies mentioned last night, we talked about housing a long time at the last meeting. So we talked about it in such a way, it was almost as if Winterville owned the land we were talking about, like how would we make affordable housing, what do we wanna see? And everybody wants brick duplexes. That's the, would be the consensus, that brick duplexes are good. Um, so the conversation lasted a little longer than I think John was anticipating, and it got a little deeper, but he did speak with us about density, how density doesn't have to be a naughty word, how it can be something that's good for the community, and I think Tim was there also. So you can fill in any blanks that I might have blanked out on that.
Okay. Um, do you have anything to add there?
Uh, I think she really hit on, there was a lot of time spent on housing. There was, um, some discussion, I don't know if you're aware, of the concept of strong towns.
Oh, okay.
Um, but as a framework, I think that's a good summary focus. I think a lot of the values that we're coming for, that kind of focal point, so a slow growth model for Winterville's.
Slow growth.
Uh, and really prioritizing the things we've already done to place the emphasis.
Okay. Yeah, that's a tricky one, because I heard somebody last night, um, um, speaking out against this new subdivision and then saying we need affordable housing, we're having, yeah, in the same sentence, and it's just, but you, that's, that's a lot more houses than fifty-eight. Mm-hmm. Um, I call it more affordable options is what I would like to have developers do. No developers are doing that right now. Um, because when, with supply chain and wood prices driving up, they've all just taken that and run with it, and if prices come down, they don't come down for us. Come down for them. So, and I'm a little tired of hearing developers, you know, bellyache about pricing. It's like, you're passing that along to stocks. Don't wanna hear it. And that's, that's the one thing that bugs me about the development is, you know, eighteen hundred, twenty-two hundred square foot houses for four hundred thousand dollars is not interesting.
A thousand square foot house would be adequate.
You know, a young family living out here, which, which you'd love to attract, or retirees or whatever, you know, when we, when we moved out here eighteen years ago, it was affordable. Um, now, we'd be riding through.
But it's not just a Winterville problem.
Keep counting before.
United States.
It is, it is.
We can solve the problem, which is poster child.
Yeah.
Of the, the housing crisis.
Well, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do. When's the next, um, conference meeting?
October the twelfth.
Okay. I'm gonna let the citizens know that y'all are gonna vote on the proposal.
Man, wait.
So y'all can get some participation, and you'll have a hundred and fifty people to help you with the conference. I mean, oh, that would work, right? And then we would get participation, and we'd hear what everybody has to say.
You're gonna buy your own up a door for this meeting.
That's right.
So, don't, I might do that.
But we would, you know, that's not a totally bad suggestion, really. We would like to hear.
I'm just saying, I've heard that they might be voting, and we.
Spread the word.
I let them, because we're all too nervous to vote on it. So we were just gonna let the, the steering committee, the conference of plans, steering committee.
You're right.
And whatever they say goes. So y'all better show up.
You are starting some ugly rumors.
That's, that's marketing, right?
I'll do that before I close this.
Uh, they're still up with the next agenda.
All right, here we go. About to ask y'all for some big money.
Uh-uh.
Big money. So our forestry liaison, ex officio member Lee Clark, has invited us, the tree commission, to come to this three-day conference in lovely Rome, Georgia, where all your dreams have gotten true.
So you are being broadcast from here.
Oh, I'll, I'll, I'll tone it down.
I'll edit it out.
So, um, I didn't make copies of this for everybody, but this is just a little bit of the stuff, and this is some, um, that's going around. So I would like to go to this conference because I feel like I'm at the bottom of the learning curve, taking over for Bob, who was like so knowledgeable and filled in on everything, tree and nature, and I would like to be a lot better informed about everything, really. So I think it'd be a really good chance for me to get a lot of information in three days, um, and bring it back here, and be able to speak intelligently about what other people are doing, uh, because it's not such a weird, you know, idea if, you know, Springfield's doing it over there. So the first event is a roundtable of tree boards. So, um, you know, this development that's here now, I mean, it's gonna play out however it's gonna go. But in the future, if we do wanna have a little more say in what happens, then we can build it into our ordinances and into our best practices. So working toward the future, um, I just want to, uh, speak for the trees. I just.
We did do, but we, I'm sorry, but we did build that into a bit of the ordinance, because we wrote that ordinance before Winterville Station land. The land, when, when we display, or when we disrupt a certain amount of land, we've gotta have a plan from a developer. And we get to go in and kind of mark, like we did for the trail, we get to go in and rip, and, and ribbon off trees that we wanna protect.
The ordinance is pretty good.
Just needs to be a little bit.
It's pretty good. It needs to be tied in better to the building permit.
Okay.
And the, uh, the subdivision plan, it needs to be, be tied.
Can we do that before December?
Well, Susan's gonna have her ordinance, um, we were supposed to do it on Thursday, but we got distracted with this matter.
This proposal is not gonna, but, once it's approved, it can, it operates off the current code, but it's from the approval date.
The tree ordinance says that you must submit a tree plan.
Yeah.
But the building permit application doesn't exactly.
Okay.
So we need to just get it all together.
Let's get that changed quick.
How soon could you think you guys could get that?
When you guys meet, next, next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
We could submit some changes for you soon.
Okay.
Definitely before the sixty days.
And this is, these are, okay, this is revisions to the.
So I think we would submit it then to, I mean, tell me the chain of command. If we want us to make a change to the building permit.
You gotta go, planning zoning needs to approve it first.
They can approve it.
And recommend it to us for.
But it's already in the ordinance, so it's just like leaving a little bit of change.
Perfect. Do that, send it to Chairman Watwood, and, uh, copy me and ask sort of P and Z to approve it and send it out.
All the pieces are there. It just needs a little bit of.
Any, any protection, anything like that, regardless of who's, what's coming in?
No, we'll get it done.
Yeah, okay.
But part of it was the changing of the guard, where Bob and those guys started it.
Right.
And now.
Okay.
All you got to meet, guys. So if you wanna teach me some stuff, send me to Rome.
And I'm assuming the tree commission is recommending you go to this, obviously?
I would recommend that we all go, but not everybody wants to go, so.
But this is, this is, this is supported by the tree commission?
Well, you're looking deep in teeth and stuff.
I'm a chairperson, so.
Yeah.
Vote on, but everyone.
We didn't vote on it.
I, I was, it was general consensus, so.
Okay, that's perfect.
It's a good plan.
Perfect. I'm, I'm good. Yeah, and we don't have to vote on this, we can approve it right here. Are you okay with that?
So I'll just, um, pay for it and let you reverse me.
Yeah, perfect.
Great.
Save your receipts.
I would nail that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming tonight. Just to clear it up, we're, the emails we're getting of this, well.
Emails can get a little bit.
Thanks for going and for bringing back the.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm gonna go, and I'm gonna, you know, bring back the best practices that I can.
Clean energy resolution. Um, any, so we're gonna vote on this next week?
Yes, and, um, the, yeah, next week, we'll vote on the one hundred percent Winterville clean, clean renewable energy resolution. And the, excuse me, the entire resolution is on the city website, and has been there for a few weeks. I'm not gonna read the, uh, entire resolution, uh, because a lot of it is the whereas statements, where we talk about why we're doing this, but I will briefly just read what we are gonna resolve to do. Um, and I'll read the entire thing next week before we vote. But now be a resolve by the mayor and city council of Winterville. Section one, city of Winterville government will obtain hundred percent of its electricity needs from clean and renewable energy sources by two thousand and thirty-five, and all other energy needs will be met by one hundred percent clean renewable energy by two thousand and fifty. And section two, city of Winterville will implement policies and programs and lead a comprehensive effort to support this transition. And section three, the city of Winterville government will allocate funding for energy efficiency improvements and/or clean and renewable energy projects until the goal of one hundred percent clean renewable use by the city of Winterville, um, is achieved. Uh, that's the clean renewable energy resolution. And then we'll also, uh, I will bring you the mayor's pledge that you've agreed to sign, and thank you for that. That basically is a Sierra Club pledge, where mayors of communities agree to basically the same goals that are in our clean, uh, renewable energy resolution. That's it.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I'll put it on the agenda. So, uh, and we don't need to vote on the mayor's pledge. I'll just sign it. Do you have that, bring that to me to sign?
I will, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Solar project update, do you have anything?
Uh, just that we're, you know, the solar, the installation is complete. We're now in the process of going through, uh, a little bit of bureaucracy with, uh, Georgia Power to state that it's, this, that it has been installed, and then we have to sign a connection agreement. Um, I've stated, I've verified that it's installed for one of the projects. They divided it into two. There's a project for the auditorium and a project for the community center, uh, according to Georgia Power. The community center project has not been sent to us to verify yet, because it's still in review, most likely because there's a battery system involved. So the gist of it is, we're still working through the process with Georgia Power, uh, to work towards a cutover, but we don't have a date yet.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. All right, uh, Winterville PD update, chief is away at chief school, um, but we have, uh, that was, was that fun?
Yes.
Um, uh, well, I had an update on, um, Joe, we have stands, we have laptops, not in yet, but we have stand. Do we have anything, equipment in yet?
Uh, no.
Okay. Um, yeah, okay. I'll find out from chief. I, and I put this on here for a reason, but I'll have to get an update from him, maybe share it next week. No, um, oh, maybe it was, if there were any other needs, and maybe he had mentioned something he might need. I'll check with him. It wasn't a, a big ask, but it was something we needed to look at, look at. Okay, um, volunteer fire department, um, engine one and, uh, equipment. We have met, the safety committee has met with the vol, uh, with chief, um, and assistant chief. Um, and we have gotten an offer on the old truck, engine one, for fifty thousand dollars, and, um, which is a good deal, that we will vote on next week, and some of the money will be put towards outfitting the new truck with equipment that we need to fill the gaps that we get to have taken off the old truck, can get them up to date. And then we'll try to look at getting another vehicle for medical response, a more appropriate vehicle for medical response than the engine two. So, but engine two is outfitted right now, ready to go, right?
Ready to roll, that's first of all.
Great. But I like what you said about.
He's working.
I like what you said about getting it ready this week with Ricky, and I've got something to say about that later, but, um, anything else? So we'll, we'll vote to you, we'll vote to approve the truck sale for sure, and then I looked, I saw your email, and I'll have to catch up to whether or not we're gonna go ahead and vote for the, up to a spend on the equipment, which we probably will.
Yeah.
Just to give you guys.
I think, I think, I think we're ready.
We're recommended, like, we're ready.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so they'll recommend next week and we'll vote on. Um, and when did you say the timeline for getting the trucks sold and to the broker?
They're ready. They're just waiting on us.
Okay, great.
We're gonna strip it, the rest of it now, next week, take radios out, things like that, and we'll get.
Awesome.
And engine two, everything's fixed and warranty, all, everything's kind of checked out on that one. Okay, thank you.
Awesome job last night. Saw all you guys out there transferring everything over the new truck.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, good, good stuff. Thank you.
Um, any questions? Y'all stop me if I'm blasting through this and just, you know, just pull on the reins. Um, auditorium floor, ceiling, and chairs update, the, uh, the floor and ceiling, the ceiling's been painted, the floor's been polished. The chairs are due back, um, October seventeenth to be installed that Tuesday, the old chairs. The old chairs will be installed. The new chairs will be a couple, another month or so out, but they should be installed before the Todd Snyder Show and the Christmas events that we now have, two, um, Big Red Trio and Randall Bramlett's, um, Christmas concert. Big giant band, December thirtieth. Uh, we just, I just talked to Nancy yesterday, and, um, we agreed on the, on the date and, uh, the specifics of the contract, so it'd be great for the city and great for Randall, and he wants, he hopefully wants to make this the new home for his holiday show, which in years past was a two-night stand at the Foundry, selling four hundred tickets, selling, selling the place out both nights, so, um, hopefully it'll become a tradition in, in the city.
One, one thing about auditorium, you do a lot of work up there, but it's, uh, bathroom to building, the other one to rooms.
Correct.
I'm not, I'm not proud of it, probably, but, but there needs to be some work done on bathrooms, and cleaning that whole area. Or more, we get the chairs in and, and start building.
I'll, I'll have my attendants take care of that.
Yeah. Yeah, but I wanna talk about what we're gonna do, when we have a concert Saturday night.
Right.
A concert Sunday night, and, um, something else, right, true, Sunday morning.
Lucas, Lucas Farrell.
Cause that's actually a big deal.
Um, no, yeah, and we do, but we did get some quotes on, like, a, a full cleaning of the auditorium after all this work's been done, right? So cleaning the balls and doing all that. But, um, we do need, we need a crew on call. We need, we need like a quoted crew on call.
Across the street.
CNC? Yeah, and it, that needs to be built into the price of the shows that come through there.
Absolutely.
That needs to be decided.
Yeah.
Starting, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. So.
I agree.
Can, can you get a price from CNC?
Sure.
On a late night, early AM.
Yeah.
Cleaning on weekends on a, on a price that they'll agree to.
You're doing what, a Saturday night?
Saturday night, more.
Before the church starts on Sunday.
On Sunday night, like after everybody leaves, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you have to be late, or, or if all it takes is actually do it, uh, can do it in the morning, like at six in the morning till eight. Cause the church didn't really get it there till nine, the church used, lays till nine, but I'll work it out.
I'm just talking about a weekend price that we, whether it's, whether we call it five times a weekend, or call them one time on a weekend, it's a flat rate that they, that the city calls them, they send the crew over, they clean the auditorium, and it's good. It's a flat rate that they, that the city calls them, they send the crew over, they clean the auditorium and it's good.
Yeah, could we also reach out to Peachy Green?
Oh, yeah, yeah, let's get two quotes.
Peachy Green. Peachy Green Cleaning Cooperative? I just need a contact for them.
I'll get it to you.
Alright.
That's a great idea, he's a Winterville guy too, yeah.
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
And Br- if you can, bring that to us next week when this covers.
Sure, I'll, I'll get the answers tomorrow, or as soon as I give them.
How, right now?
But I have a question.
I'll walk across the street, I'll walk to the C C right now.
How, how does that address the problem now, where you're saying it currently needs cleaning, how's that, is that gonna be taken care of by them, or?
Yeah, after we get the work done, I think we have, we need a.
Okay, okay, I got you. Yeah.
Service price? It's, it's hot? Okay.
What is it?
Thirty thousand, that's ridiculous.
Oh, yeah, oh my. But that is to go up into the lights and ceiling and the, and the, um, banister or the, um, um,
Duck room.
Duck work, you know, cleaning everything, bricks and door handles, like the full total purging of dust and construction debris for the last four years.
Wow.
That's deep, deep, deeply.
Kinda.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I know after a construction is happening, the cleaning is a way different ballpark than just, hey, come clean my house, so.
But is it possible that these two companies we're gonna get quotes from could do that as well?
No, cause you need a scissor lift and you gotta have.
You're just moving industrial.
Right.
And, yeah, that's certainly, I'll take care of them.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Airfield fires.
And they get everything out of there.
Um, thanks for bringing that up, cause that happened, well, it's happened multiple times, of course, but even the weekend of the Marigold Fest, we had an event two nights back to back, and then church and school the next week, and it was kind of chaotic, and, so. Yeah.
So we might go ahead and vote on both next week.
Yeah.
Could you get one more quote from, like, service master?
Well, I can't. Yeah, I can't.
Yeah, like, I have multiple quotes for some comparison, it'd be great, thank you.
Okay, um, so we wrap that up?
Yes.
Auditorium curtains, so the, the old curtains are blue, right, midnight blue?
Black.
They're black?
Yeah.
They're blue?
Blue, they look white to me, I guess I saw them sitting.
What color is your shirt?
They're black.
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 You don't need to talk about it, because you're throwing away.
Are they thrown away?
They are, they're thrown away.
When I took them out of the auditorium, they were starting to rip.
Okay.
High, there.
Okay.
I, I, right, I rather know where.
Then we will not even entertain that.
Nope.
So, and that's fine, um, we just need to get drywall and new curtains on that side at some point soon. And that might be covered under, we might, maybe, if we save a little money on what we're doing now, it might work in under, cause I don't think it'd be that expensive. I don't know how much those curtains were on the back.
The, the ones that they're hanging on?
The new black curtains?
Uh, I've got a quote.
I can't remember, but they were about that, weren't they, they weren't that much?
Oh, no, they aren't.
Yeah.
No, they're thin curtains, they're, they're four by, four by four and a half, yeah, they're not that much.
Okay.
The drywall would be better than the curtains.
Yeah, okay, um, tree commission member Brian Herndon, um, this will be voted on next week?
This is an addition, a new person?
A new person, is that correct? Mr. Brian, can you?
We, we approve Brian.
You recommend, yeah, so, okay. Do we, are we voting on your members? Are we?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll vote.
We recommend.
You recommend, all in, perfect, thank you, alright, so, um, that's great, so will you have a full board?
I believe we're allowed three to seven, and Brian will make us five. You need Dorset, Mateo, and Ryan.
Nice.
Great, great, that's perfect, thank you.
It's a good group.
Um, and so last, on the kind of new business part of the agenda, um, uh, Richard, Ricky Knight will be honored. Chief, you wanna let us know where the wall, or if y'all, if y'all, if y'all are going?
Ray and I will be going up, uh, we're gonna leave at four o'clock Friday morning, go nine-hour drive to Innesburg, Maryland. We're gonna stay in around Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. And, uh, they'll be putting Ricky on the memorial wall for National Call of Duty.
Great, yeah. Um, sad that we have to
Very.
Um, celebrate that, but we do celebrate that for one of our public safety members and volunteer firefighters, so thanks for going and showing your support and to the family as well, so, and there was, uh, we put something in the Gazette about that as well. The score, so, um, do you have anything else to say about that? Does the family go?
Uh, Lisa and I think her two sons are going.
Great, that'd be so.
It was all paid for, I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be a nice event. Great, alright, so citizen committee updates, do we have any updates, does, does anybody inherit anything, or someone's passed along?
No.
Peace flaws, nothing?
I will give you a heads up on, um, a change coming to the Firefly Trail Local Action Committee. Uh, we've talked about it on the, uh, on our board of directors meeting, and I think one of the communities already done this. Uh, we're gonna change our name soon, and we'll bring that to you after we vote on it officially. But we just have talked about it, uh, as a, as a Firefly Trail Board and within the action committees. It's more about, the local action committee sounds government-y a bit, and it seems like it raised, it, it gives it a, a perception of more expectations. Uh, and we, we just want it to be, uh, more open to people that just wanna come and, and do whatever they can to, to help the Firefly Trail, so we're gonna probably rename it the Winterville Friends of the Firefly, I just, that's coming, but not yet, just giving you a heads up.
Okay, so you wanna lower your expectation?
That's what I'm saying.
We, we, we do wanna lower expectation, perceived expectations of people who might join, we, because it's, it's really more of a fun group that does. You know, we do a little trash pickup, we make a few recommendations to this, this group about amenities that we'd like to see, and things like that, it's, uh, this local action committee seems a little government-y, and we want it to be more friendly, so friends is in the name. Anyway, that, that's coming probably next month.
Right. Regional commission updates, um, nothing there, uh, I need to get an update on the code revisions from Justin and, um, Mark, so I'll try to get that before next week and report out on the code revisions. Um, other than that, story matching and all, that's kind of, it's always fluid, speed limits will be studied, we'll wait until anything's done on the crosswalks. Uh, I did get a, um, an email from W A Engineering with a proposed, um, with they wanna meet with A C C Leisure Services and Traffic Engineering about Dozier, Robert Hardman, Main Street, before they submit a, a final proposal or to us. So once they do that, I'll bring it forward, and then we'll present that to the city, or to the community, um, for some public input before we do anything. And then we can try to put the crosswalks of our main street and park with that, that'll make money, that's already been approved, and peace flaws. Okay, um, citizen requests for the agenda, you know, you usually have bike rentals on there, I think I'm gonna leave that on there, cause we need to put those up. Anything, as you, as you're out and about, ask citizens if they have anything for the agenda.
I have one more item.
Oh, yeah.
So we're having a party on October the sixteenth, the tree commission is sponsoring a pop-up at the pavilion.
Oh.
To honor all the sponsors and sponsees of the American trees.
Right.
And we put the word out in the Gazette and through some other emails, I'm gonna make a flyer and maybe hang it up here on the pavilion, everyone is welcome, so, um, consider your favorite tree product, maybe it's an apple pie or maple syrup, or, um, pounded acorn flower powder, it's fun, it's really crazy and wild. Um, sky's the limit, or, you know, if you just want a potato salad, just make it. Don't wanna bring anything, just come.
But it is supposed to be a tree product.
Tree product pop-up.
I like that.
Tree product.
Tree product pop-up.
Say that five times fast, yeah, tree product.
One to four at the pavilion on Sunday, October sixteenth, all are welcome.
Yeah, do we wanna put that on the marquee?
Sure.
And it's been on the city calendar for a few weeks now, when Mateo reached out to me to spread the word, I had, I asked him to put it on the city calendar.
Do we wanna also put that the tree commission will be voting on the new proposal?
You'll absolutely be voting.
Y'all are all gonna be voting on this for the next two months, get people to your meetings.
Whoever makes the best tree item gets to vote, gets to decide.
We'll make you an honorary city council member.
Yes.
For, for the day.
For that vote, yes.
Um, any concerns or issues for the agenda from city council for next week, everybody good?
Can I add a thing?
Mm-hmm.
Well, so we've, you guys have all been very supportive of Winterville Wellness, and actually the six-week yoga series is about to wrap up on the seventeenth. So I would love to look into some other ideas, I've been talking to citizens and, um, especially a lot of local teachers on their activities or sports and stuff that they would like us to consider, so I think, once I get a quote, I'll come to you guys.
I was gonna say, I heard someone said they would love to have like a kickball league.
A what?
Kickball league.
Nice. That, that would be fun.
It would be fun. I don't know how we do that, I'm just telling you.
I don't know.
It may or may not have been my husband.
Okay, so I'm.
He is, he's the new head coach, he can just do it.
So I'm gonna change. I'm gonna change the last issues, issues, um, and concerns for agenda to the add a thing.
Add a thing, suggest a thing.
So far I've heard zumba and painting.
Uh, and all I'll say is October twenty-fourth is, um, town hall in the train depot, seven o'clock. Will, the focus will probably be this proposal, uh, unless there are other things citizens wanna discuss, but that'll probably take up most of the conversation. Um, I don't think there's anything else, I don't think so, any announcements or, anyway, we'll cover that next week. Okay, that concludes our workshop. Thank you.
Great, thank you.